Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Carver Planning Board of August 22nd. We will call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. If we would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to create lots 1, 2, and 3 from property owned by ADGA Realty, Assessors Map 8, Lot 29-01 and 2, located at South Main Street in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. Discussion and possible vote. Good evening. If you could identify yourself.
Good evening. Rick Grady from Grady Consulting. Have a pretty straightforward A&R plan here with adequate frontage on South Main Street with 58 and adequate area for each of the lots as well. There is a cranberry bog to the rear of the property that our wetland scientist has determined was constructed out of upland area, not wetland area, so it's not subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Did the Conservation Commission have a chance to do this? Did you file an ANOI in regards to this submission?
We did not.
Because Indian Brook is well within the 200-foot setback zone, and that should have been marked out on this as well as any 65 and 100-foot. Our Concom is the one that makes the determination in regards to where wetland is and what is a wetland, and that's why we require an ANOI to be filed in regard to all submissions. And it should, all the footage should be noted on the map. Because Indian Brook...
Indian Brook is shown on the plan on the right-hand side. It's off of the property.
It still has a 200-foot protection zone, and that's why we require ANOIs to be done in regards to this. Mr. Bott, when was this submitted? It's left blank on here.
Filed with the town perk on August 8th.
August 8th.
So, if I may, so under Massachusetts general law, the planning board has 21 days to endorse an A&R plan. Based on this date of August 8th, the planning board's next meeting will be after the A&R plan was submitted. As we've talked about before, and as we'll hear in the training, we've got on the 31st, the only parameters for the board endorsing an A&R plan is does it have frontage on one of three ways? In this case, it has frontage on South Main Street, which is a public way. This is the typical fashion, what the plan says in that right corner up there. You can scroll in and take a look at it. Or I can make less clicks with the mouse because you know it's a little dicey. The planning board's endorsement of this plan indicates only that the plan is not a subdivision under MGL Chapter 41, Section 81L, and does not indicate that the lot is buildable or that it meets zoning, health, conservation, or general bylaw requirements. So, there's no recognition that anything that comes before the board as an A&R plan is buildable. That's up to the applicant to do that when they come for a building permit. So, in spite of what the planning board's regulations are, if someone submits a plan, the board has those 21 days to endorse it. You can ask the applicant for a continuance if they, you know, want to go and provide that additional information, but it's not required under the statute.
Right, but the application should be completed before it's submitted, and that should be checked in regards to this because at this point, we can't really do a site walk, and Conservation Commission hasn't had a chance to weigh in in regards to this property. No offense, we don't doubt you, but it's not the applicant's purview to decide what is and what is not wetlands in regards to properties. So...
I think what the statement says in the endorsement not only addresses conservation, everything going forward is at the applicant's risk. We could find out that the lot doesn't perk. We could find out all kinds of other related information that would prevent it from getting a building permit.
Right, but that's, that's, that's on, the weight of that is on you. The weight of a completed application where we can make an appropriate decision in regards to the projects, and it's not just this project, it's every project is on us. I just have a couple of quick questions in regards to this. I see an existing property line, and I see an easement. Is the existing property line defining lot, let's say Lot 2? Is that existing property line defining it as 60,000 square feet? Or is the darker line behind it where the easement is, is that...
It's the darker solid line.
So, you don't own that easement?
Yes, each individual lot will own the easement.
Well, what you're saying is that the cranberry bog owner owns the land under the easement, but the Lot 1, 2, and 3 are going to have the right to use that easement.
No, vice versa.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, the lot owner will own the fee in the land, and the cranberry bog will have an easement over the lot.
So, we're extending the property line from the existing property line back roughly 94 feet to a new property line?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're saying you're going to get rid of the easement, basically?
No, no, the easement will belong to the cranberry bog owner, is correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, which is, which is fine. As long as the property is owned by...
For zoning purposes, each of the lots will have adequate area.
Yes.
Yes.
Any further questions or comments? All right. The Chair will accept the motion to approve the A&R for lots 1, 2, and 3 off of South Main Street with the statement that they are not to be considered buildable lots until Conservation Commission has had the opportunity to do an ANOI and to assess the wetlands.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sordillo. Do you have any further discussion?
I just need you to restate the motion.
That the lots are not to be considered buildable lots until Conservation Commission has determined the boundaries of any wetlands that might be in regards to this. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Paul Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I think I will probably stop and pick it up. Thank you.
You have good evening.
You too.
All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing notice on the application of Capeway Cannabis requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 4950, 5300, and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 307 and 307A Tremont Street in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 95, Lot 3AE, to extend the hours of operation to Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, in a marijuana overlay general business district. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Howe.
And if I may, just, we were just having this discussion as a sidebar over here. So, this is a special permit by the planning board, and that requires a four-fifth vote. So, one of the planning board members isn't here tonight, and so you have these five folks who can vote on it because Mr. Williams is our alternate. If for some reason, one of those four members isn't here at a continued hearing, you won't have a sufficient number of votes to carry. No, 1, 2, 3, 4. Yeah, you'll have four, but you need all four of them for the vote.
Wait, what? Don makes five, right?
Right, if one member's missing.
Well, it's this, right now, there's five. But if a member's, a different member's not here at a continued hearing...
Right, okay.
Then you're down to just those four.
Right.
So, you'll need 100% of the votes of the board. So, your option is to go ahead this evening or to wait until there's a full board. I always like to make the applicant aware of that.
No, I understand. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. All right. Would you care to give a narrative as to why you wish to extend the hours? I know that it was on your recommendation that...
When these hours were put in at the town meeting, when this was, Marijuana Overlay District was adopted, there was a church in that area. And it was, the hours were put in place for the churches so the church could have services and so forth. We ended up buying the church, and there's no church there any longer. So, we would like to extend our hours to normal business hours.
I don't believe that the 6 o'clock requirement is part of our bylaws. It was under your recommendation in our agreement that we set it Sunday till 6 o'clock.
I think it was in the bylaw because it was brought up at the town meeting. That's what I was under...
So, if I may...
Please.
So, looking at the bylaw, what the bylaw says that in addition to any specific conditions applicable to the applicant's non-medical marijuana establishment, this special permit granting authority may include the following conditions in any permitted granted bylaw under this, under this bylaw. One of those is A, hours of operation. It says A, hours of operation. If none are specified in the special permit, the hours of operation will be limited from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and noon to 6:00 PM on Sundays. So, it doesn't express what the hours of operation are in the bylaw. It has a default that says if the board doesn't specify them, they will default to this. In the interim, I have been researching Massachusetts general law about hours of operation because a question was asked, and we've got an email from somebody who's in your packet, and I'll read it in just a moment or so. But there are no hours of operation for marijuana sales as there is for alcohol sales. So, oftentimes, we equate recreational marijuana to package stores. The police chief and I discussed this, and we feel sort of the same way that while there aren't any rules, any laws for when you can sell marijuana in Massachusetts, there are for alcohol, and lots of times, lots of towns have them sort of on that same footing. So, there's no prohibition for whatever hours they're asking for. It's whatever the board decides. But it's not unusual for folks to look and say, you know, "We're going to have the hours of this operation the same as we would for a package store." And in that case, you know, package stores are required, they're allowed to operate Saturday, Monday to Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 to 11:00. So, the board can do whatever they'd like on this application.
And now, my question is, it's defining, is our bylaws defining, or is it the state setting the default?
The state, the state says it's up to the locals what the hours of operation are. Our bylaw has a default in it. If your special permit didn't put any hours in, if you just said, "Yeah, open your shop," and you didn't express any hours, it would default to that section of the bylaw. It says, yeah, those hours of operation.
All right. So, it's specifically in the order of conditions here, so shouldn't this be in front of the ZBA, not the planning board?
No. This is, this is a modification of a special permit. The original special permit had these hours, and it's essentially modifying the special permit, and that's what they're here for tonight. So, the original decision had those hours of, dramatic pauses, I tend to feel, very large proceedings, limited to 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 to 6:00 on Sundays. So, Capeway Cannabis is here to ask to amend their special permit, which is essentially what they're doing at this point, asking to change those hours to 8:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00, 8:00 PM. 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Yes.
Okay. Now, personally, I'm not inclined to reduce it from 9:00 AM to 8:00 AM in regards to, that's just my personal opinion in regards to this. I think 9:00 AM is a reasonable time to be, to be opening it up. And currently, your Sunday is 12 to 6?
12 to 6. But in, in the original, that was because there was a church there, and we were looking at a property across the street from the church, and it was a...
What's it outlined in here? What's, sorry.
What was the question?
All right, so, all right, so, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 12:00 to 6:00 on Sundays. Okay, right. And people coming and going from church. Personally, I don't mind the 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I would, I would prefer 10:00 to 8:00 PM on a Sunday because the church, well, there's a lot of people on the road at 9:00 and 10:00, but... Now, I noticed there's been food trucks at the business?
Yeah, we have, we've had one there one day a week or sometimes twice a week.
And that's been permitted or otherwise checked through the Board of Health in regards to that?
Yes, it is all licensed with the Board of Health, and it's a, it's not every week. It's sporadic here and there.
Okay. And I would also recommend a vermin control plan be established if food is going to be served on the property because now there's going to be barrels with, with waste and food in it. But, um, all right. Is there anybody here from the public that would care to speak?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I actually would feel a little bit better before voting on this, knowing how the police chief feels about this. I do see that the fire chief, I meant that Jesse Boyle did address this.
No, actually, that's Lot 5, Jesse's memory.
Huh?
Oh, no, no. I...
No, no, I'm looking at it.
I'll show you here. Okay, thank you.
I'm looking at it. I just don't have, I don't have any input from the police chief.
Right.
And personally, I don't want it to be open before noon time, and I was fine going forward and accepting those hours originally. So, I'm going to need to hear what the police chief has to say about that.
Did you speak to the police chief? Because I spoke with the police chief when he was down at our shop last week.
Yeah, I can shed some light on that, if you'd like. So, so I emailed the chief, and we talked today, and he replied back to me. He said, so the question I asked the chief was, "We have Capeway Cannabis looking to extend their hours of operation, and I wanted to touch base with you about Ms. McNamara's comments, which we should read in a moment, and if they've had any past issues with Capeway Cannabis, and do you have any concerns about extending their hours of operation? As I wrote, in general, I take a general view of dealing with cannabis like alcohol by regulating it, taxing it, and allowing it to operate like the local paky. The chief's reply, "No, we have logged no issues with Capeway Cannabis to date. Two, I have no concerns with the business operations during whichever hours it is legal to do so. I agree with your view in comparison to a package store. And three, as for the event that's coming up on 9/9, they've had similar events with no issues, and I'm told this one is smaller than the first, and there'll hopefully be no issues there." So, the chief has weighed in and said he doesn't have any issue.
Smaller than the first?
Yeah, so there's been a couple of different food trucks on the site. So, I checked with the Board of Health on that as well as the select board.
But it also kind of sounded like that he was okay with the fact that it was operating the same hours as a package store.
Yeah, correct.
What is the, what time do package doors open on?
Package doors open 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Sundays.
11:00 PM? We don't have a package store open in this town past 9 o'clock.
Massachusetts, Massachusetts allows...
You're giving us Massachusetts law.
Yeah, correct.
Well, I'm concerned about our town's bylaws.
Right, because they don't open until 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning.
The amount of business they get, it's not worth staying open.
I said, "I don't believe they open before 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning."
I haven't seen anything open before 9:00 or anything open after 9:00.
Right.
So, that's, that's the state. So, regarding food trucks and things like that, like I said, this is not, you know, part of this particular application, but the question was asked, and so I went and did the research and talked to folks within, within Town Hall, asking, you know, the select board, you know, when someone has an event, do they have to come to them for, you know, something from a common victorious license or something like that? The reply we got is, "Since it's on private property, there's no restrictions on a ban. Catering permits, food trucks that do not have a permanent address would fall into the Board of Health, not the select board." And so, I checked with, with our health agent, who told me that the food truck that they're using barbecue...
Last Bite Barbecue?
Last, thank you, Last Bite Barbecue, has a valid permit to operate in the town Carver. So, I wanted to kind of address the comments that I got from someone who can't be at the meeting, and like I said, I still haven't read their letter yet. But hours similar to package stores, not an issue with food trucks, and not an issue with, with the Board of Health for that particular thing, even though that's not their request. Their request is simply to change those hours.
All right. Do you have any more question? No, please.
Personally, I would like to...
Well, we can close the public hearing and open it for discussion.
Well, I want to know what the public has to say about it.
Oh, right, we have a letter from the public?
Yeah, so, so I received an email today from Laura McNamara, 246 Tremont Street. "It is my understanding that Capeway Cannabis is looking to increase their current hours of operation. With regards to Sunday hours, are they bound to the current blue laws that are applied to alcohol? I believe the proprietors of the establishment are looking to open at 8:00 AM on Sundays, in which I, we are opposed. I have been very vocal with my regards, with my strong personal feelings about free-range pot use, especially amongst society's early adolescents. Also learning that Capeway Cannabis is planning an event in Perrin's Pot Party," close Perrin's, "on their property for Saturday, September 9th. Has this event already been approved? Huge concerns about this and its contributing impact on overburdening Tremont Street. King Richard's Fair is also hosting their event that weekend. Tremont Street, in my opinion, is a neglected section of Carver. There's ample room for pedestrian crosswalks and sections of sidewalks with added stop signs as more and more businesses are squeezed in on Tremont Street. I believe it's the duty of the town to make long overdue and necessary improvements." Respectfully, Laura McNamara. And regarding the question about traffic and the, the fact that King Richard's Fair is opening that week as well, the chief goes on to say, "While the fair is in operation on that day, the first few weeks are usually the slowest." So, the issue before the board are hours of operation, but because he spoke, and I did email them back to let them know we'd be talking about this because they couldn't make it, that there are other concerns that have been addressed by other boards within the town.
I didn't quite catch what the event on September 9th is.
We're having one of our vendors, Garcia Handpick, is a brand, and they're bringing out their airstream, and we just take a little spot in our parking lot, and there's some promotional stuff that day just for customers coming in.
But no marijuana from the van?
Marijuana consumption is not allowed on our property.
No, I mean, like, you're not going to be giving away samples or selling out of an airstream?
No, that's against every state regulation.
It's going to be t-shirts and fruit trees?
Yeah, t-shirts, keychains, and things like that.
Okay.
They're promoting their brand, and so we decided to help them promote their brand.
There's no samples.
It's a good question because package stores are allowed to bring wine and other beverages and samples, so I don't blame it for us. No, and I, you know...
We do samples in our store of uninfused products quite regularly. We have an ice cream social every Tuesday. We sell some ice cream that's infused. You can come in and get an uninfused ice cream cone, taste what the ice cream flavor tastes like and that kind of stuff.
Inside the store?
It's in a reception area.
So, you're, you're serving food inside of the building?
I guess it's a sampling, I guess.
I, I, I don't know where, well, I suppose you guys sell edibles, right?
We do, we do.
I do believe that when it comes to dairy products, there's more stringent regulations in regards to that, so...
We'll look into it if...
Yeah, we check with the Board of Health on the ice cream, uninfused ice cream samples.
Yes.
For the listening audience, uninfused means there's...
No camp, no THC, no cannabis.
There's no product in the product.
Right, because you can't be serving any foods or, I mean, you can sell them for them to take away, but inside the store...
You go to Shaw's and you can get samples.
There should be no samples. Well, I know the liquor stores do it, but...
Grocery stores do?
I'm pretty sure it's...
I used to do that.
It's not allowed in, right? Because you're not allowed to consume it on the property, so...
But what about those wine tastings that they have?
Well, that's not...
That's, yeah.
My point, my point is, he had brought up a good question, you know?
You're not allowed to consume any of their products.
So, if I could just clarify, we don't give anything away that, it's against state law for us to give anything away that has any THC in it. We don't, we're not even allowed to discount products.
Right.
So...
But the law also says you're not allowed to consume it on the premises either.
And that's on several signs in our property as well.
Can I ask, what's the difference between medical marijuana and non-medical marijuana?
The products themselves, there is no difference. There is a difference in the amount that you can purchase, and there's a difference in the tax base on it. So, medical marijuana is taxed differently than recreational marijuana, but the products themselves come from the same exact line.
And how do you choose which one that you're going to sell?
We are only recreational. You have to have a medical card to purchase medical marijuana, which you have to update annually, but we, we do not have medical marijuana in our facility. We are a recreational facility only.
And I could be wrong, but I think you need a separate license for medical marijuana.
It is, it's a separate license, and you also have to grow a facility attached to have a medical facility.
Oh.
And that's the downside to it.
And because it's a medical product, I don't know that it's taxed, so...
Right. Mr. Bott has his hand.
Yeah, and the Carver bylaw has two sections in it, 4950 for medical marijuana dispensaries and 5,000 addressing non-medical marijuana, so they're addressed separately in the bylaw.
And we have separate overlay districts for them.
So, the question before the board tonight is hours of operation.
All right. The board feel, I don't see any, any public here, anybody that care to speak on it? How do you feel about closing the public hearing?
Do you... Yeah, I mean, this was publicized, right?
Yes.
And the public didn't come forward that, you know...
Got an email, but...
Right, right. All right, so the Chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing on the application of Capeway Cannabis requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 4950, 5300, and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 307, 307A Tremont Street in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 95, Lot 3AE, to extend the hours of operation Sunday, 8 to 8, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, in a marijuana overlay general business district. Before I accept that motion, I have one more question.
I thought we were closing the public hearing.
We are, so, but I wanted to ask him a question before we did it. The building, the separate building?
Yes.
What's that used for?
Storage of t-shirts and nothing to do with marijuana cannabis whatsoever.
All right, so the Chair will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sordillo. All right, so we're going to open it for discussion. Your thoughts on the subject?
So, personally, I would like to see the hours coincide with the hours of the liquor stores, package stores. So personally, I would like to see the hours coincide with the hours of the liquor stores, package stores. So I would have to find out, you know, personally, what do we have five? Do we have three or five package stores we spot? What are their hours of operation? I mean, I want it to be as fair to you as it is to them, but I prefer it not to be open on Sunday if you didn't have to, but I'm not saying I'm against that. I'm saying I would like the hours to coincide with alcohol consumption.
That's very fair.
Yeah, so most of the liquor stores in Carver open at 8:00 to 9:00 AM on Monday through Saturday. And all of them open after 10:00 on Sunday because that's what the law is. So nobody opens before 10:00 on Sunday, and most of the package stores open at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock.
But it doesn't specify, I mean, marijuana sale, it can be different than that.
Yep, the Massachusetts General, Chapter 94, as well as 935 CMR 500, adult use of marijuana pertaining to hours of operation is silent on that. They leave it to the local towns to regulate the hours. So if you wanted to look, take a model of what liquor stores are doing, then you could certainly say 8:00 to 8:00 Monday through Saturday, and tend to.
I'm almost positive it's 10:00 to 6:00 on Sunday.
It's 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday for Jamie's Liquors.
Jamie's Liquors?
That's just the one I just pulled up, but.
Offers, the one at Shaw's?
Yeah.
Like I said, I want him to be able to have, in, you know, my opinion, I want him to be able to have the same ability to run his store according to how, you know, alcohol consumption is sold.
Well, I would go with 9:00 to 8:00 Monday through Saturday and 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday, if that's.
That's, that's where I would like to sit out. That doesn't mean that you guys have to agree with it.
No, no, I, I.
That's what I'm.
I'm on board with you, Mr. Dion.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Do you think that you really would have business at that early hour in the morning?
So we've talked to other retailers that are in the same industry, and they have a busy hour from 8:00 to 9:00, and that's why we've extended it. And then on Sundays, we feel that we miss a lot of business because people are, by noon time, maybe on where they're going for the day. Whether it be football, beach, or any of those things. So we do, and we've looked at our, some of our friends that have other sites and, you know, they do quite well during those hours.
And just looking at on Sunday hours in other marijuana stores in other towns, and I ask a question on the planners list served as well. Sunday 9:00 to 9:00, Sunday 8:00 to 9:00, Sunday 9:00 to 8:00, 9:00 to 10:00, seven days a week, and the four folks who replied back to me.
So I guess then my question would be, could you give me, say, the hours of what are our towns? Wareham, Middleborough, Plymouth, right?
All comparable, there's.
That's what I'm saying, those are, those would be the towns that order us, and those towns all have those hours?
Yeah, I looked at those, Plymouth, I think there's one in Plumpton and Wareham, just because I was on the map and I was clicking on things and saw that. Like I said, on Sunday, 10:00 is that hard date, but the other stores open earlier than what we do here.
I personally feel bad that I wasn't prepared for this. I knew you must have filed for this with the clerk, what August? Eight?
Yeah, I think prior to that, maybe, yeah, I guess, like, this was the first meeting, whatever.
Yeah, it's the first meeting.
Those are the, those are the things that I would have checked out on your behalf, you know, that I was just hoping to get some clarity on.
Yeah, the Wareham stores all open at 8:00, I think, maybe even on Sundays.
Yeah, but if you take that path of treating like package stores, then 10:00 Sunday opening? And be open till eight?
Mr. Dion, your recommendations?
Well, I don't mind the 8:00 to 8:00 Monday through Saturday, but I would be looking like 10:00 to 8:00 on a Sunday.
I like the 9:00 to 8:00. I have concerns about the 8:00 opening hour and people going to work, but that's just 10:00 to 8:00 on Sundays, but I personally am leaning towards that.
So you're looking for 12-hour days, 8:00 to 8:00, or 8:00 to 9:00?
8:00 to 8:00, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday, 9:00 to 8:00. So that's an 11-hour day?
Yeah.
So it's, the way he's got it proposed here, it's what, 13 hours total for a week?
Well, the thing that confuses me is you got Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, right?
Well, that's what he wants, yes.
That's the last thing.
Okay.
But if you go from eight, 10:00 to 8:00 on a Sunday, you're giving him 11 hours total over a week more, which is, you know.
No, I feel like if he can do more business starting earlier, why not give him an edge? That's my own personal opinion. You know, and people that go into those dispensaries, they check their IDs and everything. And it's a whole different thing than alcohol.
To go to work.
There really isn't a whole lot of.
I thought when this first opened, the big concern was traffic, and I don't think there's been, you know, traffic jams and, you know.
No.
We didn't, no.
I've driven by there several times, and it doesn't look overloaded or anything, and I just, I just want to see you succeed.
I appreciate that.
Well, the chair will, well.
So you want to do 8:00 to 8:00 Monday through Saturday, and then, what, 9:00 to 8:00 on Sunday?
10:00 to 8:00 is what the liquor stores are, so I think that's fair.
But then. Personally, I would be comfortable with 8:00 to 8:00. I would be comfortable giving him the hour Monday through Saturday, but I'd really, I'd really like to stick to the least 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday. I'm 10:00 to 6:00 on Sunday, but you guys are thinking eight, so.
Well, I'm preferring nine in the morning until eight at night, Monday through Saturday.
Mr. Bott, you are telling us.
Sunday 10:00 to 8:00, or 10:00 to 6:00.
Our package stores are what time on Sunday again?
Hey, you can't open a package store on Sunday before 10:00.
Yeah.
In Massachusetts.
In, in my opinion, I'm okay with everything, but opening any sooner than 10:00 on Sunday.
That's fair. I'm of the same mindset.
That's what I said, 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday.
I think we're pretty much in agreement on that.
Eight to eight during the week and 10:00 to 8:00 on Sunday.
Yeah.
I'll agree to that.
And I'm not trying to sway anybody.
No, 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 you're not. This is, this is your opportunity to sway people.
I feel comfortable giving you more hours.
We appreciate it.
And I'd like it to be comparable to, you know, the package stores.
I'm struggling with the opening at 8:00. I prefer at 9:00, but I'm willing to bow to the majority of the board, so. This is a special permit, correct?
Correct.
So, Mr. Williams?
Eight to eight during the week, 10:00 to 8:00 on Sundays.
So I'll, I'll be willing to accept that, yep.
I'll make, I'll make that said motion, that.
Monday through Saturday?
We do Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 8:00, and we do Sunday, 10:00 to 8:00. Is that right?
I think that's fair.
Okay, so that would be my motion.
Wait, wait, would you mind including a vermin control plan and?
Of course, of course. My thing is, is I just, with the event, I just don't want to, obviously, for my town's sake, promote, you know, the sales of it. Obviously, it's there, and it's your right to sell it. I just don't know how I feel about, you know, promoting it by giving things away and stuff like that, but where they do it in package stores, you know, I can't say no to you when they do it in the package stores. But the vermin control is going to address, you know, food waste, so.
Yes, and is your, is your dumpster fenced in?
Yes, it is.
All right.
And locked.
All right, so.
And our vendor takes his trash with him.
Now, are we opening a door for any events, or are we just considering this one event on the night?
No, that's not the board's role in just, in regulating somebody having an event. That's the Board of Health, that's those other folks.
No, I was just wondering why that was, you know, I appreciate the fact that that was brought up, so we can hear it.
In, just, so, when we've done this, we've gone to the police department ahead of time.
Oh, okay.
And asked them.
Okay.
That was our first stop.
No.
In the fire department.
Thank you for telling me that, because, you know, there might be the need for extra, you know, reinforcement.
The chief was down getting some ribs last week, and so I went out and talked to him, and he said, you know, he has no, and I, you know, he knew that what we were doing, and he had no issue with it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to ask him.
Yeah, no.
His personal opinion on it.
We've had a very good relationship with the police department. In fact, they've used our cameras three times for incidents that have happened around us, not on our property. We've not had any incidents.
I know you guys are doing a good job. I know you're doing it right. This is my, my responsibility to make sure.
I understand.
That I'm being as fair to you as far as business is concerned in, you know, a sensitive, you know, industry like this now.
And vermin-proof trash can?
Trash cans.
Trash cans, so I need a second on, on Mr. Robinson's motion. Eight to eight Monday through Saturday, 10:00 to 8:00 Sunday, vermin control plan and vermin-proof trash receptacles are, be put on the property, and they're to be put not where they're out in the open, because we have to limit screening in regards to this property due to state laws.
We don't have any trash cans on the property or any that stay on the property outside. We have a dumpster.
Are people eating ribs and such?
The gentleman that does the truck takes, has a barrel, and he takes the trash with him.
That's fine.
At, at the end of every evening.
All right.
So we don't.
So, I mean, fair enough just to say a condition that if there's any, any food in an event that's brought there, that it just has to be removed from the premises?
Yes.
And you wouldn't need a vermin control, right?
Well, you still need vermin control because it's food.
Right, that's fair, that's fair.
And I appreciate the fact that you are working with the police, you know, in any event like that.
We've had a very good relationship with the chief in the fire department as well, and we want to be on the same page and above, and we've talked to him about that from the very beginning. If he had heard of any issues, please come so we can discuss them before they get bigger than they need to.
Transparency is a very good thing.
Exactly.
All right, did I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Dion. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
One procedural matter, you need to anoint Don is voting on this because he's the associate.
Don, you'll be voting on this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been anointed.
How long's it been?
It's been a few months. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Yep, no, you're right.
I'm going to go along, Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
So you can't open it until after the appeal period?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Until, we've signed off on it.
Yeah, so.
And the health department's signed off on it.
I'll have you guys sign the decision and we file with the town clerk 20 days after the town clerk gets it. If there's no appeal, new hours.
All right.
So the first day you open at 8:00 could be in 20 days?
20 days from when the appeal, well, 20 days from when the decision is filed. Usually that's towards the end of the week.
Oh, and so it doesn't get filed tomorrow?
No. I've been writing another decision that's taken parts of my life, I feel sorry. No offense, lot five. So, yeah, I'll have that decision put together with the vermin control information on it and get that out to you guys for signature.
All right, our next order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Bean Town Home Services, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3150, 343, 41, and 2230C of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number 5 Ricketts Pond Business Park off Spring Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 32, Lot 1-5 in the Spring Street Innovation Zone and District. The lot will be comprised of approximately 6,621 square foot light industrial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage systems, septic systems, and utility connections. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Eric Shoemaker, McKenzie Engineering. I believe since we last met, we've done in receipt of Andy Glein's latest review letter. It should be dated July 25, 2023. Just read it over, and it appears to be recommendations and conditions on his end. I believe when we last spoke, after review of the plans, we just came to a conclusion on a couple items on the landscaping plan. I believe that was screening of a, was a tree in the, I believe it was removal of this tree where I'm hovering the cursor over to provide a couple shrubs in that area instead. That was one condition we discussed, and then it was extension of this fence in the rear to the, from where it forms the gate to the northern limit of the parking area in order to further screen the rear of the lot. So with that, I think we can answer any questions the board may have.
What, what type of fence did you use?
It was a six-foot-high white vinyl fence with six-inch by six-inch wildlife openings at grade.
Are you going to be able to meet the 15% front facade in regards to windows?
So that's, that's a question for the architect. He's not here with us today, I believe. We'll meet it, the front of the building will be designed to meet it, and I believe that was a condition recommended by Andy.
In the draft decision that I've been working on, condition number eight, dimensions for proposed windows shall be verified during the building permit process. The minimum of 50% of their front facade is covered with windows, as should the proposed materials for the building site.
And in regards to if it's a private road or not, it hasn't been established as a private road. Andy identifies that the owner of the development is open to discussing this with the town, but I am unaware in regards that anything's taken place in that.
Yeah, I don't believe anything has taken place on that. That's, that's a question that I believe was directed at Peter Opeczynski last time we met. I can't speak for these plans.
You don't, you don't need to respond. I was just making the notation that we haven't made it a private road, so we have to treat it like a public road. We've confirmed that there will be no public access to the site. That'll be posted.
Correct.
And I saw the lighting was addressed.
Yeah, the condition that I put in is similar to what we did for Lot 3. They had talked about full luminaires. The condition I put into Lot 3 was full cutoff light fixtures with astronomical timers and motion essentials be installed and verified as part of the building group process. So the lights go on, go off based on when the sun sets. There's a motion detector. When someone pulls in, the lights come on. The rest of the time, they burn low or just are out, because I think we talked about hours of operation. Other than for security purposes, there isn't a reason for lighting the parking lot, correct?
What's the gross floor area?
Let me look through my notes here. 10,527 square feet.
So that's going to require a sprinkler system?
Correct, yeah, and that's, that's why we revised the plan in this most recent revision to include a cistern located beneath the parking. And that's, that's why we revised the plan in this most recent revision to include a cistern located beneath the parking area. So the building will be sprinkled in accordance with, with that law and it will receive that fire protection service from the cistern. And that, that design will be verified by the plumbing engineer before issuance of the building permit.
All right, because we'll need, we'll need the fire department to verify.
If I may.
So the cistern will, the cistern will provide the water for the sprinkler system?
Correct, yep.
So amongst the, the findings in the decision, the board finds that the adequacy of utilities and other public services are met, including access by fire trucks shown on the truck turning plan is confirmed by the Carver Fire Department. Carver Fire Department also noted that while the building has a footprint of less than seventy-five, seventy-five hundred and one square feet, inclusion of the mezzanine or a second floor will trigger the requirements for sprinkler protection. Additionally, the building may require firearm system based on occupancy as defined in seven eighty CMR, the Massachusetts Building Code. This may include manual hand pull stations, horn strobe warning lights, smoke and heat detectors, et cetera. This determination will be made when the building permit is submitted per Assistant Deputy Fire Chief Boyle's memo.
Right, ah, my only, I mean, my only thing is you, you've added sprinklers and a cistern since we last met. Has Andy had a chance to assess those?
Not that I'm aware of, but he basically said, the fire code is the fire code. And additionally, the building may require, has also noted that while the building has a footprint of less than seventy-five hundred, the inclusion of the mezzanine will trigger the requirements for sprinkler protection. And then he cites seven eighty CMR, which is Massachusetts Building Code.
And where's, where's the cistern going to be and how big is it going to be?
It's fifteen thousand gallons and it's located approximately fifteen feet to the north of the proposed building in the parking area.
So, Mr. Chair, through you.
Please do.
The way a cistern works for a sprinkler system is you have to purchase the water to put in the cistern. Is that how that works?
Yes, yep.
Only because you know it's gonna happen and people in the, the area are gonna say that their wells went dry because, you know, you have a sprinkler system. So as long as they are well aware that you are purchasing the water to put it in the cistern, then, you know, that takes care of that issue.
So we add that as a condition? Add that as a requirement?
I just hope that's what we've been doing all along.
We, we did do it for lot number.
We vote lot one.
That's what, I just wanted to make sure that, that, that we're following that process.
So the required cistern will be filled with water purchased by the applicant? And obviously, if you pay your water bill, well, we don't have water bills, do we? But, yeah. You, they have to purchase the water. And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, do, do you have an architectural, I don't, we don't have an architectural rendering, rendering in front of us at the moment. Do you have one, just so I can see?
We've seen them before.
I know. I'm asking to revisit. I just wanted to make sure that I, it wasn't just a square building.
Yeah, it's, it's in the records.
I know, we're only going over what, what we had to address. I just, because you're here, I just wanted to take a quick look at it.
Of course.
I know it's probably gonna be, have something that's built very nicely.
So this is the floor plan?
I was just looking for what it's gonna look like on the outside.
Where's the loading?
That's a breakup, so it's.
Where's the loading dock side? I'm guessing this is the back of the building and then that would make this the front?
This was the one where you're coming in and backing your truck.
Yeah, has that front loading ramp got the angle?
You're gonna come in and back in.
Right, so. So they'll be backing into this area.
Into this general, so they'll be coming in towards this part of the building and backing in.
All right, and what have you done to the front landscaping buffer in regards to making it seasonal so that throughout the entire year it blocks the view of parking lot?
Yeah, so we used the recommended, I believe it was Pollinator Species List from UMass. And they have, they have various criterias for season as well as the different types of soil that each plant would thrive in. So I kinda used a mixture of, of, of that.
Evergreens and?
Yes, there's I believe there's green arborvitae's to the rear. There's eastern white pines, red cedars, redwood trees, and oak trees.
Right.
The front.
I think you did, you did find on the two sides there, it was in front where the loading area is. And that has to be blocked from public view throughout the year. So that what's planted there should be there throughout the year. It shouldn't be the city's trees that lose or low-lying plants that, that all die during the winter.
So we, we added the trees and the shrubs to the front here and then we bermed it afoot as recommended by your board to screen it from use further.
Yeah, I know.
And my other concern, which may or may not have been addressed, was does the area in front of the loading dock have to be a two-way or can it be a singular direction?
It's, it's two-way, it's twenty-four feet wide. And I think that, that would definitely help the traffic, you know, navigating the parking area if it's, if it's two-way. I think one-way with a twenty-four-foot-wide aisle would really confuse drivers.
So when your truck parks there at the loading dock, how far out does it, does it stick into the driveway, into the drive area?
It's completely confined within the loading dock.
All right, and then there's twenty-four feet.
Correct, yep.
And are you gonna have some sort of warning light or symbol there for pull-outs, pull-ins on the corner? Is, or is that truck gonna be screened? Will people be able to see that the truck's there? Will he have a clear line of view to the entrance and exit ways?
Yeah, he'll have a clear line of view with the height of, you know, the front seat at those trucks. You know, this is pretty much accurate at the terminus of, of the ramp. So he'll be able to see the parking lot perfectly. And I, I, I'm not quite sure if lights or if any of that is required. I, I think gee, probably.
Well, if it was obscured, if there were plantings there and cars were, couldn't see that the truck was pulling out, I would expect that some sort of safety implementation. But if it can be clearly seen that the truck is there and he can clearly see, oh, I think that.
Yeah, they, they'll be able to see the truck. I wanna say the, the ramp is, um, let's see the depth. The ramp is, is only a, a four-foot elevation difference.
Right, and there's no wall or obscuration, so when the truck pulls in, it, it can be seen?
Yeah, it's a retaining wall at grade, so nothing's blocking the view.
All right. Concerns, questions, comments?
No, were you, were you basically asking for some small signage that there was, you know, backing up the loading at the front?
No, I, I wasn't sure if along the, the lower part of the loading ramp there, if there was fences or bushes that might obscure the truck so that a car coming in or driving wouldn't see the truck was pulling out. But if it's not obscured.
The back, the back of the truck's four feet down, but the ramp, you're gonna see the whole top of the tractor and cab is gonna be up where you can see.
Which is, which was, which was the question I wanted answered, yes.
The back of the truck ends up level with the cement floor inside, so you can stuff it in and out.
I, I'm more concerned about the driver being able to have a clear line of sight from either a car or the truck. But I think they've sufficiently answered that question for it.
And your employees are gonna be educated on the fact that you need to use that area for loading?
Yeah, we've been doing this for a while there. They used to, you know, navigate those trucks.
Do you actually have a place over off of Plain Street?
No, we're currently operating out of Plymouth and the industrial park.
Because I thought I saw Bean Town coming out of.
There are some other companies.
Could you just identify yourself and write it?
My name is G. Bradley, owner of Bean Town.
Thank you. Concerns, questions, comments?
No, I'm really happy with this project.
All right. We've included all of Andy Glynn's concerns in regards to this in our conditions.
I have done my very best. I mentioned I've been living with this thing for a bit, looking to make sure I've got Andy's waivers and conditions in, in the decision. So.
Are you gonna be all right if it goes away?
Hmm?
Are you gonna be all right if it goes away?
I will have to find a new mission, but there's, there are several of them queued up for me, so I, I think I'm gonna be okay. So, yes, I, I, I'm under the impression that we've covered those. Waivers requested are, are in here, basically pasted from Andy's decision. Waivers to section three-one, ten G, three-four-four-two, three-four-four-one. And then the conditions that he had suggested, including the lights, the windows, super key lock that the Deputy Fire Chief wanted for access to the properties. The SWIP, storm water management issues. Only hazardous quantities of, only household qualities of hazardous materials are permitted. Separate sign permit in the standard language about making sure that the certificate of occupancy has been done. Dumpster pad bermed, runoff from the dumpster contained to the site, vermin control plan. There was a discussion about Andy did not recommend additional monitoring wells for lot five per three, four, six, five, due to the proximity of the ponds and the infiltration basins. Monitoring wells will be installed down gradient on lot five from other lots. And then in addition, I added, there will be a cistern filled with water purchased from a vendor.
Have you been, uh, oh. What about the wastewater treatment plant? Did we include that in regards to approval by the Board of Health or have they already approved it?
Well, I think what Andy said in his memo was that EPHNO defers to the Board of Health for the review and approval of the proposed wastewater treatment system.
So we're gonna defer to the Board of Health also in regards to that? He asked a question about proposed size of water service. Have we identified what the proposed size of the water services are?
That, that's usually designed by the mechanical and plumbing engineer and that, that will be verified prior to issuance of the building permit.
So that should be a condition also.
I saw that in here.
I don't see that. Also another, the other, one of the other conditions, because it was the same on all the other properties, that it'd be clearly identified that no public access will be posted.
Yep, adding that, no public access.
At the driveways.
Oh, here it is. The very, very last thing. No wonder I didn't get to it. Proposal, proposed size of the water service of the water system is still being sized. The condition should be included to verify the size of the water system during the building permit process. So we will add that as well as a condition.
And we added, no toxic hazardous materials here where, right?
Right. Only household qualities of any hazardous materials are permitted.
All right. How does the board feel? Are we ready to close the public hearing in regards to this? Uh, anybody here? I don't see anybody that wants to speak on this, so if you have nothing further to add?
No, sir.
So the chair welcomes up the motion to close the public hearing on the application of Bean Town Home Services, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections thirty-one hundred fifty-three hundred forty-three, forty-one, and twenty-two thirty C of the Carver zoning bylaw located at lot number five Ricketts Pond Business Park off Spring Street.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dionne.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Any further questions, comments, or discussions? Seeing none, Mr. Dionne.
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Williams, you are identified as a voting member of this.
Mr. Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, you have a good evening.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Wait a minute, we closed the public hearing.
You closed the public hearing.
But you also vote on it.
You know what? We voted to close the public hearing and I was thinking we had closed it already. So you're, you're correct, so.
So you got two votes, special permit and the site plan. Because there's two things in front of us.
So, all right, so we close the public hearing.
Yeah, so now you gotta vote on the site plan, four people, and the special permit, five people.
And the special permit is specific to?
To lot five.
I thought they were taken in conjunction, no?
Correct.
I thought the bylaws said that we take them together, no?
I usually put them on, because, because of the associate member, I just split them up because Don can't vote.
Because he can't vote, but I thought, yeah, I thought it was taken as, as the same.
That's typically how it is, but like I said, we got this.
Let's make sure we do it right.
All right, so the chair will accept a motion to approve the site plan for Bean Town Home Services located at lot number five Ricketts Pond Business Park with the conditions as presented.
I will make that said motion.
Motion made by, made by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Further discussion, seeing none. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right, the chair will accept the motion to approve the special permit for Bean Town Home Services located at number five Ricketts Pond with the conditions as described.
I will make that said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Dionne. Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Can I have the mover in the second one more time from that?
Mr. Robinson moved it and Mr. Dionne seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
And that was on the special permit on the site plan. It was Mr. Robinson who said that.
Got it. All right, thanks all, take care.
So that's all done. That's all done.
I know what I'm gonna do next week. Do you have something to do?
Started to look good over there.
Yeah. So we're all done with everything tonight. All right, Tom Planner notes, Mr. Bott.
All righty, a couple of things. We have our subdivision and A and R training on August thirty-first at the fire station.
A week and a day? A week and a day, next, a week from tomorrow.
Six P M.
Oh, it's not this Thursday?
No, eight thirty-one.
Oh, my gosh, that's fantastic. I was gonna have to tell you that I had to leave at seven thirty. Oh, good.
I'm very happy to hear that, so eight thirty-one. Also, the day before, there will be a public information session about the Affordable Housing Lottery. It'll be held on Zoom at six P M. for three two-bedroom, two-and-a-half units with one-car garage for these age-restricted rental houses on Plymouth Street as part of Santana Way Development. So that's the, the lottery. They'll be talking about how to qualify for the lottery and those sort of things. So those are held on Zoom. And this information is posted on our website, both on the planning board, I think on the planning page, and as well as on the homepage for the town. We've also sent in information to the library and to the Council on Aging Building to put out the word as much as we can so folks know.
I've seen it in a couple places, so.
Doing, doing what we can to, to spread the word. And then there was a, a discussion, Mr. Robinson asked about signing decisions. And so we have talked previously about looking at our procedures manual.
And so we have talked previously about looking at our procedures manual and I sent it out some time back. A few folks made comments on it and we really haven't circled back around to that. And we really need to make time, I need to make time to, you know, get into that and put some things together for you folks so we can look at it.
I couldn't, I couldn't read it because it was so tiny.
So, so, so we've got to, we need to kind of take some time and look at, you know, how we go about doing the business. The best way to do this is through those policies rather than doing things ad hoc. As I've talked about before, different places have had different mechanisms. In Kingston, just the chairman signed the decisions. In Falmouth, the board voted that the planner would sign the decisions. And I never liked that, by the way. So, so there's a couple of different models. We currently have, everybody signs it. And the only delay on that is just if the decision's not perfectly ready when we're here, then it just takes a little while to get folks into the office to get those things done.
If you don't vote on the, if you don't vote in the affirmative on the decision, I don't see that you should be required to sign it.
Well, we had this conversation early on when a number of the planning boards didn't want to sign a decision. And town council's opinion at that point was when you sign the decision, you're not agreeing with the decision, you're just saying this is the decision. So, and that gets back to, you know, how other folks have done it. So in Kingston, where the chairman signed it, if somebody didn't agree to it, the chairman didn't agree to it, well, he was still going to sign it because he was the chairman. But that, signatures of a decision isn't an endorsement of the decision, it's just an acknowledgement that a decision has been made.
Excellent.
So once again, back to me, I have to, you know, sort of get hammer and tongs back on that and bring it out and have that discussion. And those things, if we're amending our subdivision regulations, we would typically do it, we'd absolutely do it through a hearing process. As far as the board's regulations, it's not required to do so, but I think it's good practice just to put it out there so if anybody wants to comment on things, we just have it advertised. I'm more of a big tent kind of guy and prefer to defer on being over cautious than under cautious for things like that. So we need to circle back around to that and I'll make an effort to get more into that.
Excellent. I've made a request of Mr. Bott to modify our agendas so they will look somewhat different from now on. They will contain all of this information that's currently in there, but it will also contain a little bit more information in regards to it. It's based on the Falmouth model.
Yeah. So in Falmouth, on the agenda, they have when the application came in, when the hearing needs to be opened, and in some cases, when a decision has to be made. So in the case of a subdivision plan, we've got 135 days for a subdivision. So there's a closing date for a subdivision. For special permits, there's no closing date, but there's an opening date. The planning board shall open a hearing within 65 days. And the reason those things are in there is to make sure that nothing gets constructively approved. Every member of the board knows that we have to make a decision by that in that expiration date sort of for that decision is also aligned and says, "Here's the last meeting you've got before the expiration date." So if we had something that was due on December 31st, a decision had to be made by that, the agenda would include the planning board's last meeting is on December 25th. Now, I know you're not going to be here on the 25th, nor you're going to be here on the 31st, but that's what, that's basically what it is. When did it come in? When does the board have to act? And when is that last possible meeting before we have to act?
That'll be added to our agenda.
That's, that's the discussion that we had. And except in Kingston, looking at how other people do things, and by the way, Kingston is not a model. You know, it's a, something I'm familiar with. But in their case, they actually have the form of their agenda in their, on their policies and procedures and says this is how we do things. So we should like to put something together like that to make sure that, you know, we're, we're just standardizing things. You know, Marlene, who was here years before, she came out of a full-on planning department out of Falmouth. The folks, and Jack Hunter, of course, was Mr. Carver Planning for, you know, a couple decades, almost. I don't think he quite made 20 years. Jack and I worked together across the town lines. But, you know, our last couple of planners really haven't had that municipal background. So I think that some of those practices have sort of, you know, faded in and faded out. And I've been here over a year and I haven't come in and said, "Oh, we're doing all this stuff differently. We should fix that" because there's just a lot of things to do during the day in addition to the time we see here at night. So we're working on sorting all those things out and kind of reinforcing those things that are good practices, bringing back the things we should have been doing right along, and then conveying all that information to you guys in the procedures so we all know how we ought to be doing things. And for the most part, you guys are doing as well, John.
And it will also contain a list of upcoming filings.
I think that's great. I mean, tonight was a perfect example. I was unaware of when he filed, so that was good.
Great, because we only have 21 days with the A&R, which means at best, we're going to get one meeting out of it and we're not going to be able to do site blocks because, well, he put his on the eighth, so this was our first chance to handle it. But we should be aware of, of what our deadlines are.
Yeah. And my goal has always been to have things in front of the board as soon as possible. So an A&R plan, when it shows up, it goes on the agenda. For a special permit, you've got 65 days to open the hearing, but the bylaw requires 30 days for a comment period. So when an application comes in, typically it's about 30 days from when that application comes in unless it's an A&R plan. In order to make sure we've got those comments from the various departments and things like that.
Yes. Right. A lot, a lot of our DPW Police Department, as we talked about tonight, the fire department, and we want those recommendations, the Board of Health, those are integral part of our job is, is really getting those.
And even though our bylaws says it's the applicant's requirement to make sure those things get to those people, we make sure those get to those people. We do that in-house.
And regarding the acting of the signature, I wasn't looking to give you more work, but what I was looking for was the opportunity for something not to be held up because personally I couldn't get in to sign it or maybe another member might have that, you know...
All right. Like I could be leaving on vacation tomorrow, but the lawyer...
And not hold that, you know, applicant up. That was the only reason. Not looking to shirk out of the responsibility of signing, but giving the authority to someone other than myself who's going to be, you know, available.
Town council said that as long as the majority of the board signs it, that it will hold on.
Okay. Yeah. Like with the, last week, we had, when we had our site visit, we had every signature on the plan except for one. I got to the site visit and went, "Oh, shoot, there's that guy who hasn't signed it." And it was a guy. I know. So I zipped back to the office, brought the decision back, he signed it there. It would have been fine to file it with four signatures, but, you know, I try hard to get, you know, all of them on there.
Sure.
The majority will, will do. So in a pinch...
Well, I wouldn't want to be responsible for holding an applicant up just for the fact that my schedule wouldn't allow me to get back in here to sign something. That's where I was going with that.
All right. Planning board member notes. I think I've, I've covered everything. I would like to be more aggressive in seeing that ANOIs are filed before the submission. I think the 65-foot, 100 and 200-foot zones on all ANRs and subdivision plans is an important aspect in regards to our job and need to be taken in consideration. The town of Carver is a wetland protection overlay district as an entirety, so I think it directly relates to our job and I want to make sure that those are included. Other than that, do we have any further discussion?
I have a discussion. So I'm here tonight to let you know that I'm possibly going to be leaving the board. I put my house up for sale. So until I'm no longer a citizen of Carver, I'm going to remain on the board. I just want to let you know.
Well, I want to say thank you for your service. It's not an easy job.
It's not something I really wanted to do, but you...
You've done it well. You should be quite proud of yourself. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will accept a motion to approve the minutes of 7:25:23.
Who makes that motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have a second? Could be your last second.
Yeah. I'll second it.
Mr. Dion seconds it. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. And I think that concludes our business for the evening, so the chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Nope. Accept the motion.
Make that pounce.
Mr. Dion so makes that motion?
Yes, I make said motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sordillo. No further discussion? Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, everyone, and thank you Area 58 for your participation this evening. You all have a good evening.